Pledge the allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we get a roll call, Madam Auditor? It's not a good thing.
Councilmember Rivas.
Here.
Councilmember Bozak.
Here.
Councilmember Brechner. Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Jessen.
Here.
Councilmember Sims.
Present.
And Councilmember Wagner.
Here.
Sixth President.
All right, we've got a quorum. So this is the 2023 budget hearing, the start of it, first reading. I'll just read this real fast. The public hearing in first reading for the proposed 2023 budget for Porter County Government, Porter County Recycling, and the Waste Reduction District, Porter County Airport Authority, and the West Porter Township Fire District. Be held today, September 20th, 2022, at 5:30 p.m. in the County Administrative Building. So, um, the rules of conduct, I put that for the public hearing, the purpose of this meeting is to receive input regarding the 2023 budget. Every person appearing before the council shall abide by the, by the order at the direction of the President. Those who would like to speak will be allowed a minimum of three minutes. Discourteous conduct shall be regarded as a breach of privilege and shall be dealt with at the discretion of the presiding officer. So, all right, here we go into first reading. This is what Vicky's been waiting for all year.
Yes, always. Now, before I read this, I'll just warn the audience, it's going to be a very long read. Also, these are just the amounts that we advertised. They are not the fund amounts that departments submitted. We purposely advertise high. Okay, fund name. 101, general budget estimate, $53,934,720. 113, non-reverting, $337,936. 124, reassessment, $685,000. 182, bond number two, $2,071,268. 183, bond number three, $1,003,45,800. 254, local income tax, $7,506,592. 342, police pension, $300,000. 615, animal shelter, $239,928. 616, convention and visitors bureau, $2.5 million. 702, highway, $5,967,475. 706, local road and street, $2,226,000. 790, cumulative bridge, $9.5 million. 801, health, $2,567,654. 1,001, civic center, $739,374. 1151, continuing ed, $36,000. 1156, emergency telephone, $3 million. 1185, jail lease rental, $2,965,000. 1303, park, $322,000. 2142, parking garage, $17,400. 2243, plant commission, $1,160,000. 2391, CCD, $2,688,971. 9500, county corrections, $178,800. 9501, prosecutor county user fee, $428,000. 9502, health maintenance, $112,200. 9503, foundation budget fund, $7 million. 9504, L.A.P.C., $21,600. 9505, recorder perpetuation, $387,834. 9506, and abuse, $127,326. 9507, G.I.S., $100,000. 9508, prosecutor pre-trial diversion, $170,179. 9509, juvenile probation user fees, $148,44. 9510, adult probation user fees, $836,138. 9511, survey or perpetuation, $301,000. 9512, firearms, $102,000. 9513, extradition, $6,000. 9514, hands or substance, $48,000. 9515, vehicle inspection, $6,000. 9516, accidents, $12,000. 9517, domestic violence grant, $216,000. 9518, cable TV franchise, $1,320,000. 9519, county 4D incentive, $145,000,140. 9520, prosecutor stop grant, $65,000. 9521, memorial opera house, $626,269. 9522, public safety data tech, $750,000. 9523, jury fees, $54,000. 9524, elected official training, $15,302. 9524, clerk 4D, $112,48. 9526, prosecutor 4D incentive fund, $257,422. 9527, wildlife management donation fund, $29,040. 9528, photo duplicates, $13,200. 9529, ARPA, $31,757,350. 9530, clerk perpetuation, $275,000. 9531, state criminal alien assist, $9,600. 9532, health department trust account, tobacco. 83,292. 9533, circuit court, family court, $40,000. 9534, stormwater management, $4,744,37. 9535, inmate processing, $165,032. 9536, trail fund, $60,000. 9537, juvenile probation admin fees, $2,077. 9538, circuit court, DCS, $19,378. 9539, animal shelter donation, $200,000. 9540, sheriff riverboat, $501,600. 9541, circuit court, ADR, $9,272. 9542, 93.788 addiction response grant, $14,400. 9543, juvenile detention codes, $109,318. 9544, forfeiture pass-through, $300,000. 9545, 45.025 M.O.H.I.E.C. grant, $11,436. 9546, county user fees, $270,606. 9547, sex and violent offender administration, $27,798. 9548, hospital sale proceeds, $798,000. 9549, drug task force, $178,34. 9550, public defender supplemental, $136,800. 9551, prosecutor 4D PCA fund, $12,000. 9552, medical care for inmates, $27,720. 9554, DEA proceeds, $150,000. 9555, Portage School Resource Officers, $255,666. 9556, county white CAD, 9/11. 352,313. 9558, bioterrorism response, $211,913. 9559, sheriff overweight vehicle, $27,204. 9560, highway overweight vehicles, $60,000. 9561, sheriff donation, $64,800. 9562, sheriff adult community corrections, $321,000. 9563, public defender court community corrections, $97,886. 9564, adult probation community corrections, $241,581. 9565, 93.68 health I.A.C. grant, $146,554. 9566, sheriff videotape fees, $12,000. 9567, health insurance fund, $12 million. 9568, unsafe building, $240,000. 9569, highway engineering, $212,000. 9578, ditch fund, $936,000. 9571, animal control fees, control, $80,840. 9572, animal shelter fee, shelter, $124,405. 9573, highway community crossings, $1.2 million. 9574, court interpreter grant, $10,800. 9578, E.M.A. district task force fund, $37,378. 9576, Vassia guardianship grant, $72,000. 9577, stormwater bond construction fund, $3,360,000. 9578, sheriff overtime, $175,000. 9579, health COVID immune vac support, $415,075. 9580, health COVID epidemiology lab, $120,000. 9581, health COVID workforce co-op, $360,000. Airport, 8101, special airport general, $1,489,184. 8190, special airport cumulative building, $338,555. Recycling, 8210, special solid waste management, $2,112,113. 9500, non-reverting capital fund, solid waste, $70,200. West Porter Fire, 8601, special fire service general, $147,720. And 8691, special cumulative fire, $94,085. And that concludes first reading. Yes.
All right, there you have it. So, this time we'll open the, um, open the public hearing for the, um, the budget process. This is an opportunity for the public to, um, speak on the, uh, what was just read in the budget process. So, um, if you're going to do so, I would ask you to go to the podium over there, state your name, address, and, um, you know, speak about whatever you want to speak about with the upcoming 2023 budget. So, come on up. No takers? Anybody want to speak about the 2023 budget we're about to embark on, what's been read? No? Nobody? Nobody? One more time, anybody want to speak on the 2023 budget? This is the public hearing portion. This is the opportunity. If there's nobody that wants to speak, I'll close the public hearing. So, um, Vicky put together a few things for, for us to begin the discussion. First reading, we always try to begin to have a general discussion and kind of where we're laying the groundwork for second reading as we go through this. So, Vicky, I think you've got some, uh...
Some visuals.
Some visuals, some...
Okay, if you don't mind, I'm going to stand.
Yes.
Okay, so what we wanted to do is just give you a brief visual depiction of the state of some of our funds. Now, we have more than, you know, 200 funds, so this is not a review of all of the funds, just some select funds, just to show you some history behind what has happened in the past 10 years or so in some of our most important funds. So, we're going to begin taking a brief look at some non-property tax-supported funds. These are funds that get their revenue from sources other than property taxes, and property taxes tend to be our largest single funding source to run county governments. So, these are non-property tax funds. So, the first one we're going to take a look at is our lit fund. Now, this line that you see is the cash balance in each of those years, and this particular graph starts at 2015. There's not a lot of up or down at all. This is a pretty stable fund. At the bottom, there are statistics on the operating balance. As you might recall, the gold standard for government funds is that we should strive for an operating balance of, at bare minimum, 15%. And for this purpose, operating balance is defined as the cash balance at the beginning of the year relative to the adopted budget. So, it assumes, it looks at how much would be available to carry out your budget regardless of incoming revenue. And so, what we should be shooting for, depending on the fund, should be an operating balance in the 20% to 30% or higher range. And as you could see, the lit fund has been pretty stable. The commissioners have done a very good job of staying within their budget. You've approved responsible budgets. There haven't been a lot of additional appropriations, and this is a good fund that has been fiscally managed well. And so, the, that approach should continue as we go forward. And as you could see, in 2021, their operating balance was about 43%, which is pretty good. Now, the next fund that we're going to take a look at is the E91 surcharge fund. This is the fund that pays for salaries and overtime for our 911 department, and it's funded through a surcharge on our funds. As you could see, their, their, the fund had some small balances back in 2010, 2013, but then ever since around that time, this fund has really, really grown. And so, it's now having an operating balance, supporting an operating balance of about 75%. Now, the next non-property tax fund we're taking a look at is our health insurance fund. You see this downward trajectory of the line? This is the fund that we've been talking about, that the revenues are not keeping up with the expenditures, and we do need to build more revenue into this fund. We need to turn that line going up, not continuing to go down. Fortunately, we have time to address this, and we're hopeful that in the coming near future, you will help support this fund with additional revenue, additional appropriations into this fund. This is the fund that we use to pay employee health insurance claims, and so it's a vitally important fund. This has been a fund that is constantly on our watch because it's a very volatile fund. We don't have control over the expenditures. We have a good idea of the revenues except for our stop-loss reimbursements. So, hopefully, we will turn that up, that line up, and in the upcoming budget session, we'll try to encourage additional appropriations somewhere in the budgets to help stabilize this fund. Now, let's move to property tax funds. You might recall from your report at your last meeting that we looked at max tax, maximum property tax levies as well as circuit breaker credits, also known as tax cap credits. Property tax funds are dealt with differently. We have to live within our max levies. So, these are the, some of the funds that are supported by property taxes. The same rules apply. We need to shoot for an operating balance of somewhere between 20% to 30% so that we can reasonably grow our budgets each year and avoid budget cuts. So, the first one that we're going to look at is our county health department fund. You could see that in 2012, 2013, there was a pretty nice cash balance, but then there was a spending spree, and that cash balance eroded quite a bit. And we got to 2014, and that line came down quite a bit. This fund has been on our watch every year since. There were some years we were not sure that the health department fund would be able to actually have enough revenue to fund the budgets that you would support. And after a few years, we had meetings all the time with the, at budget hearing time with the health department administration to try to talk about how we could cut the expenses or keep expenditures under control. There was one year that we purposely directed more of the property tax levy to the health department in order to keep it stable. But then, look at what happened in the year 2020. We all know what happened in the year 2020, and for the health department, that meant a lot of federal dollars coming into the fund to reimburse them for expenses. So, really, in 2020, for a large portion of the year, it's like they didn't even have to pay their own salaries because we had federal reimbursement. And since then, this fund balance has just grown to the point that it's now, last year ended the year with an operating balance of 97%. So, the health department fund is doing exceptionally well, but do keep in mind, we need to keep an eye on this and continue to manage it properly. We don't want another spend-down like what happened in 2013, or whatever year that was. So, but right now, the health department's doing well. Now, the next fund that we're going to take a look at is really a success story. It's our CCD fund. This is managed by the commissioners. Back in 2010, 2012, it had a really high cash balance, but there was a big spend-down that happened, and look what happened to that operating margin. It just fell down. Year after year, you would approve a budget, and the DLGF would say, yeah, this budget has to be cut because the revenues are just not there to support the budget. Through cooperation between our office, the commissioners, and the budgets that the county council have approved, we've started to bring that line back up. And this is a success story because in the last few years, the CCD budget has been approved without a problem. I have no reason to believe that the CCD budget submitted won't be approved again. So, we're bringing that back up. We have a pretty good operating margin. This really, truly is a success story that I'm, I'm, I'm pleased about because year after year, the DLGF saying, cut this budget, was no fun. And I'm saving the best for last, the general fund. Way back in like the 2010 area, the county general fund boasted a pretty good cash balance, but then look what happened. Not to sound like a broken record, but there was quite a bit of spend-down. The county eroded its operating balance. And I draw your attention to the year 2013. That line ended with a cash balance of only about a quarter of a million dollars. This is our largest county operating fund, so that was pretty much a crisis situation. But if we were in accrual-based county like we are now, that, that line really should have been below the line because we actually ended the year in a deficit that year because we had a huge bill that we knew we had to pay, that we couldn't pay at the end of the year. That's pretty unacceptable. That operating margin in 2013 was less than 1%. And that is not what you want with any of your funds, but especially the county general fund. Fortunately, through a coordinated effort between the commissioners, the county council, and our office, we have built the general fund back up. We now have an operating balance of about 25%. It's not as high as some other funds, but keep in mind, this is a very, very large fund, and to keep that operating balance in that 20% level is tough to do because this is a complicated fund. But this is truly a great success story. We need to keep that operating balance as high as it's been in order to continue to responsibly grow the general fund instead of going back to those days where we had to have budget cuts. And I conclude that, the visual tour of some of these important funds, because funds tell a story, and I think some of these graphs really tell a story of what happens when you overspend in a particular year. It's very hard to come back out of it. So, that concludes the general fund.
Thank you.
Very good.
Another couple of looks. Thank you, Madam Auditor. So, um, if you guys want to continue on the discussion, you know, or kind of where we're headed, I mean, you guys see that, um, I think we just passed out a few things for you guys also. As we begin on this and, you know, have to figure out a path forward over the next month and a half, this is our opportunity to prioritize, you know, what we want to do. You know, I know the, the wage committee did meet, uh, last week, I think. Are you guys meeting again this week?
Yeah, Thursday.
Thursday? So, you know, that's a, a big part. The timing of it is perfect, so, you know, we can dive in and, and see, you know, what we can do for our employees. It's, and I think it's important, it's a competitive market out there right now, so, um, this was one of the reasons we did this. So, the timing's perfect. So, that's going to be a big part of, um, the budget session. You guys know raises for the entire county is not cheap. It takes up a good portion of money. I, I guess with that said, Vicky, what is your thoughts on what we can grow, the general fund?
The general fund, um, we should shoot for an overall growth of 1.45 million. This will keep us within our max levy, and it will also maintain a pretty strong operating balance so that we can continue to grow the general fund in a few years. So, 1.45 million is the target increase.
She overshoots that.
And if you'd like to put that in perspective, we could bring one more slide up.
Correct.
Okay. And it'll be the last, the last one. Okay, so, 1.45 million increase, if you look at historically, going back to about 2016, that would be the single largest increase in the last few years. So, that's nothing to sneeze at, but I believe it's sustainable, and, uh, it's, like I said, it's within our levy restrictions, and it would preserve that operating balance. So, that just shows the adopted budgets of the county general fund for each of those years, along with the dollar increase. And so, we have not, at least in, in recent memory, grown 1.45 million. That would be a pretty big increase.
And, um, what are, what's the general fund request that was turned in at this point in time? Was it, is that the general fund request that is about a million dollars? And that doesn't include any raises?
Yeah. Of the budgets that were submitted, the overall increase is $979,003.
So, that's, and, and most of that does not, or all of it doesn't include any raises for new employees?
No.
So, that's just operating requests, basically. So, just to put things in perspective, you know, the auditor believes that we can comfortably grow, grow the general fund, $1.5 million, without giving a single raise out, we have requests that are near a million dollars. So, if you want to give raises out and substantial raises out, or, you know, whatever you want to call them, healthy raises out, then we've got a work cut out for us during second reading as we go through this budget. I mean, we need to keep that in mind then, you know, is, is, you know, balance out. We go through second reading, and we don't make cuts, you know, to requests, and we get at the end, you know, that's what we're left with with raises.
Are you going to ask Madam Auditor to keep a running account of what we...
Yeah, for sure. Yeah. As we go through second reading, what we pass, you know, what that kind of builds up to. So, it's always tight. I think you guys have been around. It's, there's not, you know, tons of huge money that we get every year. So, it's, we got to be careful as we go through second reading and go through budgets to see what's necessary to, to make certain that, you know, we can take care of our employees. Anybody got any comments, or...
You know, uh, Vicky, on, I'm particularly interested in the health fund, uh, health fund account, insurance. And so, and I appreciate the spreadsheet for the last five years, four results, and then the 2022 projected. So, it looks like the projected for 2022 is, at this point, which, you know, that, that can change, it's just a projection, but nine, 9,49,000, which is actually down from 2021. Am I reading that right?
Okay.
I don't know what he's reading. On this one?
I don't have a copy of that. I know we provided that to the council. I'm sorry.
So, which, if that, if that in fact happens, that's great, but I'm even more interested in what the, uh, what the thought is for 2023. And I don't know if we've heard that from G.I.S. or what that anticipated increase is going to be for next year, but that clearly plays a big part in our budget, budget discussion.
I think they're having those discussions with the commissioners now.
Yes.
I just provided some information about this activity that I projected through 2022. I just provided that to them today. It's hard to project into 2023 because the program has been changing constantly. So, quite a few changes just in 2022 alone.
All right. Well, that's, of course, that's such a big category that if, uh, that would be certainly as, to the best of our ability, we've got to anticipate what that cost is going to be. Otherwise, a lot of what we talk about relative to the budget doesn't matter much. I mean, that could swallow up, uh, an increase in a, in a very significant way. And so, the sooner we get that information, I guess, the better, um, so we can anticipate that.
Yes.
And I know that's not your...
Yeah, no, we're definitely looking for it as well.
And I, I think that's another one, is we can see that we're, I think, to Mike's point, is we're not bringing in enough of the revenue to sustain what we're spending right now, and we saw that in the auditor's, um, you know, fund, uh, report there. So, whether we find a couple million dollars and infuse that fund, or we start budgeting more, you know, find places to start budgeting more money, or a combination of both, right? If, if we increase funding our healthcare annually by half a million and infuse that fund with a million and a half or something, I'm just throwing, so that even makes things still, when we talk about that 1.4 million dollars that she thinks we can increase, you know, there's how, the employee health insurance that we have to maybe budget more every year. Where do we do that out of? The general fund? Lit, you know, so... Or do we not fund, budget anymore, and we just continue to find cash and put it in every couple of years?
Well, when we talk about cash balances, I mean, as this notes, if projections hold true based on what we have today, we're going to be a half a million dollars short, a negative balance at the end of the year.
Now, that does not take into account any reimbursements we might be receiving because we don't know when we'll be getting those reimbursements, but based on the trunts, that's what is projected. So, again, I would request a bit of a cash infusion into this fund beyond the appropriations.
I, I don't expect much in, in the way of revenues because when we stop loss is funded, it, the stop-loss reimbursement typically comes in through the first few months of the year. I would not expect many stop-loss reimbursements in, through the rest of the year.
But it could happen.
It could happen. I have built a little bit in there, but it's unlikely. It's, it's just a way of our, we have, we have a fiscal year for our stop-loss coverage. That's changing going forward, but for now, it goes through March. That's changing going forward, but for now, it goes through March. So it's March to March, and then it looks at the claims. And so you really, your large amount of your claims are gonna be towards the end of your fiscal year as they build up. When you hit that stop-loss max, once you hit that max, then you can start getting the reimbursement of the stop-loss of those additional claims. Stop-loss being, we have a max out-of-pocket. Once we hit that out-of-pocket, then the insurance, the stop-loss insurance keeps up.
Any other questions? Discussion? It's, like every year, it's not easy, but as you guys can see with her, her charts graphs, that we've done a good job, year after year, um, growing operating balances, to not ever happen to make cuts, and, and to try to do our best to give raises to our employees, you know, take care of things, um, and keeping taxes as low as possible at the same time. So it's, every year's a challenge. This year won't be any, any different, you know? And then I think maybe what is more, um, glowing or the spotlight is, it is a, it is a competitive market for employees out there, so I think we're hearing it. So we gotta try our best to take care of our employees. But again, we have limited resources.
I think we always have done a good job of trying to take care of them.
So, oops. Any other comments, questions on that? Entertainer motion, I think we always approve first reading, so entertainer motion to approve first reading.
Let me make the motion.
Second.
Motion on the second on the floor for, um, first reading. Did you guys want Vicki to read it again?
Waive, waive the reading.
Waive the reading. Can we get a roll call, Madam Auditor, that there's no further discussion?
Councilmember Bosick.
Yes.
Councilmember Brechner.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
And Councilmember Rebus.
Yes.
Seven zero.
So that concludes first reading. We'll be back here for the start of second reading on Tuesday, October fourth, five thirty. So we'll go through, you know, second reading. We have one, two, three nights of second reading. There's a lot, and you guys see the schedule. Um, the same thing is the red on your guys' schedule are the ones that have changes in them. So we know, same thing we kind of did last year, so we can kind of fly through the, the ones that have no changes in them and get to what needs to be changed. So there's, um, I think there's a lot going on, you guys, right now with the budgets, with the wage study, with, with ARPA out there, with projects coming up. So I think it's time to, we discuss all this stuff as we move forward through second reading and into the final reading. So if there's nothing else, entertainer motion to, uh, adjourn this meeting. We'll take a quick break and come back for our regular meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
It's a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Be back in about five...